We'll call the meeting to order. First, on our agenda is the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance. Say that. Be happy as anything. But tomorrow is almost here. So done with the election. Yeah, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
We'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
There's a second. Arnie? Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Nay? Abstentions? Okay, the agenda is approved. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, consent agenda has been adopted. Now time for public input. Do we have anyone signed up for public? Moving right along. Okay. I think you are up, young man.
So first off, we posted the SAT, the ACT, and the pre-ACT. And the pre-ACT was required by all ninth and 10th graders, which went very well and had really good participation and stuff. Second, this month, we had homecoming with over 400 people attending, which was absolutely great. Lucas Flau and Tatum Montiel were our king and queen. We've also started after-school tutoring. I don't exactly know what is happening there, but it's unbelievable helping out a whole bunch of kids, and that's great. We have new clubs like Pirate Underground, which has like Magic, The Gathering, and like D and D and stuff. And we also have the Crochet Club opening up on Wednesdays. We also had our first choir concert that happened, I believe, two weeks ago with really increased attendance and stuff, which was really good for them. The Drama Club also put on Haunted House, and they have a play on the 6th. We also have parent-teacher conferences on 13th of November, which is pretty good. And most winter sports have ended by now, but I believe officially they will end on the 18th. Volleyball won their first playoff game, and we are going to the championship. The championship tournament on Friday and Saturday, which is really good. We could have a chance to get to Win State, which is wonderful. And our football won their last match against North Bend last Friday. And we had a car fundraiser that was raffled off on halftime for that. And the new car for the fundraiser supporting our sports and stuff was shown. I believe that's it. I believe that's it.
Did they award it, or did they just announce the competition?
They raffled it off.
Oh, they did?
Yes. Somebody won, I believe it was a mother of one of our cheerleaders.
Awesome. I seen it driving around town the other day. Down Chaperone Highway, still had those stickers on it.
Oh, really? You saw it?
Yeah. I was happy.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Elijah. Okay, we have two requests, or one request for out-of-state travel.
Hi, DB. Hello. I'm John Cruz, band director. And every year, we have what we call the WIBIC, the Western International Band Clinic, takes place up in Seattle. Students have to audition and submit their auditions and hope they get chosen. We had five students at Marshfield audition. One got chosen, and I'd like her to introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Nico. I'm a ninth grader, and it's always been my dream to go to WIBIC. And I probably practiced for like five months, and I worked really hard. I was super nervous about my audition. But I was really excited that I got in. So I have to work really hard on the music.
What instrument?
Oh, euphonium. Yeah. Not well heard of, but really, really good instrument.
It's a protection. What is the old look there? Old rats, like a baby tuba, like a baby tuba.
So I'm really excited to go, go to Seattle.
Yeah.
I don't know.
My son plays the euphonium.
Really?
I didn't know that.
He wanted to play the drums, but they already had.
She'd be roaming with a young lady from band and two young ladies from North Bend. We did the kind of caravan that direction together.
Yeah.
How exciting.
Yeah, congratulations.
That's very impressive, by the way.
To approve the out-of-state travel request?
I will move we approve the out-of-state travel request.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion?
I think that it's really important for our kids to get out and see other people and participate in programs like that. And she'll have three more years to help encourage other people in our community to do the same.
Exactly.
I'm really excited about it. I think it's a wide investment.
Agreed. Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion carries.
The gentleman's present.
You did a chance. Come back and tell us how it went.
Okay.
I'll make sure she does. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie? You're next on our agenda. We moved quickly.
So two years ago, in February or January, I came to the board to ask permission to pursue an Oregon parts of the recreational trails program grant, which is a reimbursement grant. Given the okay, that first year, didn't make it. So I went locally for local granters and got enough to do part of the project. The whole project is to do, reestablish the Milokoma Marsh Trail, starts at the trailhead parking next to the athletic field, out to the Salt Marsh, which was the goal to get my students in 1987, when I started taking over for Emily Ashworth. It was been 30 some years, and the trail is not no longer accessible standard. The other things have been, and the four goals of the Milokoma Marsh management plan, which the board has adopted a couple times with some revisions, is habitat, education, recreation, access, and public stewardship. And we're getting all those points pretty well done, except happiness. And the access is to reestablish these trails. We've added in this first go with local donors, which are on the list that you all have in front of you. Is the Swallow Loop Trail, which goes from the Milokoma Marsh Trail here and back to the athletic field, and the improvement of the driveway down to the trailhead parking, an expansion of that parking. Because I know there's a particular organization that really likes to pack that place on Saturdays. We would be going with, we got a lot of interest in this from contractors. We got six people showing up for the walkthrough. Five of them sent in bids, and we chose one from those. So, and I think it's because of the donors that they saw. And of course, many of them, go to the next slide, happened to be, I know at least two at Knife River were former students of mine. This one was in my first class after taking over for Emily Ashworth. And that was really, really fun to work with. And they had a great time. They loved the work. They loved being there, doing that job. And we're hoping to get them back, but OPRD hasn't come through with the recommendation to proceed, or notice to proceed. We have the money allotted. Marina has already signed the contract with them, so it's all set. But the rains have come. There's a portion of the trail that's a little bit sensitive because there's a sludge lagoon pipe that's only two feet under the surface. And so we'll probably have to postpone it till next year, which is okay, because the OPRD allows that. And the little green things on the left are part of the trailhead parking. Those are removable ballers, lockable ballers, that we'll put in place in two places. And those are manufactured by Glenn Krupps' class. And I put the names of the students that were involved in that, which was great. I really enjoyed working with Glenn and his students to design and come up with these things that will last a long time and be much better than what we had down there for just chain gates which get run into a lot. Anyway, that's the update. See how things go for the next session of trail improvement. Any questions?
I've been down there and walked the trails. They're really nice.
Yeah.
And there's new, there's three new, I should have mentioned this, but it's in the thing which mentions the DEQ SEP project. That was the first step. We replaced some culvers that were almost gone, one of which is called a beaver pond limber. And there's science explaining those things in there. Kuz watershed did more than 20 species of native plantings near the kiosk. And then the main site, the trailhead, it gives a nice orientation to the trails and shows what it used to be like 100 years ago. So anyway, get down there. Be happy to join you.
Yeah.
Mosquitoes are so awful, but.
Thanks, Jamie. Is there any questions? Nope. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda. CBEA business. I'll have some mine, too.
Back a couple slides.
There we go.
Thank you, David. I am Anthony Johnson. I am co-president of CBEA. And I guess we're just going to give you a pretty quick update on what we've had going on. I'm sorry, I can't see the screen from over here, so I stepped to the side. So our member spotlight for this month is Andrea. I'm sorry, if you're from Eastside, please correct me. Bog? Bog, ah, oh for two. So Andrea spent countless hours of her weekend incorporating our adopted curriculum into, I can't see that word, slides that were relevant and engaging for kindergarteners. She started with the daily Amplify Skills, Amplify Knowledge, Bridges Number Corner, and Bridges Math Slides, given to us with the curriculum, and then modified them to make her own. This required reviewing videos on YouTube, finding appropriate images to coordinate with vocabulary words, incorporating ASL, and supplementing with additional practice as needed. She graciously shared those slides with both Eastside and Madison teachers. Her work has created a system of equity and quality across the entire grade level. So, thank you, Andrea.
That's awesome.
Which one is she in the picture?
Yeah, which one is she in?
Barlet. Thank you, David.
Barlet?
With the glasses? Okay. Oh, I know her.
Yeah. Yeah, she looks familiar.
We have a new consultant coming from us through OEA, Daniel. Those of you that met him in our last bargaining, he has now moved on to the North Coast. So we have Chico Robinson coming to us from Arizona. He was president of his local, and he was one of the, well, we don't want to go. We don't want to go there. He's going to be a great asset to Kuspa. We got to meet with him last weekend, and I'm really excited about the experience and information he can bring to us here at CBEA. We also sent four members. This is where we actually got to meet Chico. He was one of the keynote speakers there. We had a bargaining conference put on by OEA, where we just got to talk about bargaining strategy, got bargaining updates throughout the state and things like that. And we were able to send four members. I went, Becky went, Tracy and Amanda also went with us up there. It was a great weekend. And I think it'll be good for all of us with bargaining this year, which I need to send out our intent to bargain. I know it's supposed to be that November 1st, but I'll get on that. Where are you guys writing on the first?
Yeah.
You are, oh, damn, I'm the holdup. Yeah, so we're just really excited about bargaining this year and seeing what we can mutually agree to for our staff and students and community.
I think that's your last.
I think so, too. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Oh.
No, you didn't leave.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, Bree.
Bree?
Arnie?
She was picking up all those signs.
My phone died because my girl got a phone call that she was sick today and had to get her, but she was sent home with her brother. She's proceeded to call me probably 20 times to the point where my phone has died. I will be leaving as soon as I speak tonight.
Not in the car like they used to be.
Yeah.
The things that work. And we would not be a classified union if we do not plug books. And so our conferences with next week bring some book fairs into the school. I know Madison, for sure, is going to have a book fair Tuesday through Friday, Tuesday through Friday until 7:00. Okay, only on conference day, so on the Wednesday and Thursday until 7:00. So if you have kids, or grandkids, or friends with kids, you guys are going to have a book fair. And I believe Milokoma might be having one as well in this time.
25% off on Sunday.
Do they have one as well? Well, you don't care, maybe, but. I didn't want to ask.
Do you have somebody there?
Yeah, it's a sunset we'll do there in the spring. So, but Madison, I just thought, some support. And then some of the things I want to talk to you guys about today is that we do have some staff that are accessing the professional development funds that we have available for classified staff for this year. So we've already gotten several applications of classified staff who are taking advantage of our college classes or workshops currently. And then one of the things I just want to bring up, because I think it needs to always be brought up, so it, you know, has a voice and isn't silenced, is just adequate staffing and subs. Our classified staff are getting tired from the shortages in coverage that ends up being caused. And I know that we've been looking at it collaboratively, but it is something that's out there, and it's wearing some of us down a little bit in the building. And it kind of ties in with the behavior that we see in our school. And I've heard from some members that behavior seems more extreme, but also where it seems like that tier three has shrunk a little. And so, yeah, some extreme behaviors, that maybe some of the systems are falling into place. And so that's just something that I've kind of gotten some feedback. And I have a unique opportunity being in the schools. And so from my personal point of view, and not necessarily union, is that the feel in the hallways are definitely a lot more positive than what we've seen in the past, even though we are still bringing some extreme behaviors. And then I'm now going to do a personal job plug. November is Native American Heritage Month. And so I just want to take a moment to recognize our people that are indigenous to the land. And I want to ask you guys, do you guys know how many federally recognized tribes we have in Oregon? Nine? Yeah, well, you're not allowed to. And then besides Diane or Arnie, does anybody know how many federally recognized tribes we have here local in our area?
Four.
Depends on how far you.
It can hold up your fingers.
How big is the area you want to say?
Our school district in here, in our area. Somebody raised a hand. We have, we have two. And I just want to share that with you guys, the names of those people and recognize them. We have the Coquill Indian Tribe, who we officially partner with, with my program, That's Top. And then we also have the Confederated Tribes of Kusla or Anquah and Sagasla Indians in our area. And so I encourage you guys this month to look up some traditions or cultures. They both have beautiful websites with information and kind of learn about the people that have lived here since time immemorial and to recognize that and share that with your students, for those of you listening online. And I just had to take the podium for a minute.
Two lawn houses. Yeah.
We do, we have two plank houses.
And we built one, one of our tribes built one for the University of Oregon.
I didn't, I didn't know that. I knew that you were very involved, Arnie. I knew you and Diane, when you guys raised your hand, we weren't allowed to.
Arnie has a stop for everything, or a little.
So can we start with the curriculum that is required by the state for Native American local tribes?
That are shared history. It is being incorporated. There has been some, I saw RFPs and stuff with the individual tribal nations. Some of them have it out. I know like the Confederate Tribes of Kusla or Anquah Indians have a Beautiful Abundance map on their page. I know the Coquill are working on having that, their curriculum. For those of you who don't know, SB 20, it's our shared history, which is the native curriculum. It is mandated at certain grade levels, and those are available online. And there's been a lot of trainings in our community, Arnie, about that. Brenda Brainerd happens to be one of the trainers who offers a lot of PD throughout the summer and through the rent. And then each tribe also is creating curriculum from kindergarten through 12th grade. For Tap, we did do some collaborative work with Madison staff, the kindergarten staff last year, because our Amplify and the knowledge component has a lot of Native American curriculum in it. But none of it included any specific Northwest tribes. And so to match that curriculum, we had somebody from the Education Learning Center come in, and we matched what Amplify looked like. And so one of the goals is to work with our local tribes and get some of that local knowledge in our Amplify knowledge components throughout everywhere that it shows up in Amplify. So that's a personal thing that our district is working on. Sorry to run with that, but I was like, I can't lose opportunity when you guys have to listen to me to be able to, you know, recognize that, or otherwise I might be in my job. Oh, Steph Thonley. She would be used to me going off on a tangent. And so this month, and I have horrible vision, I can't see that, so I will just talk about her. Anne is another one of our attendance advocates. And so her main focus, when you're looking at full school attendance, is that our third through sixth grades, that would be Milokoma and Sunset School, which I know we'll be hearing from one of them tonight. But she also does so much more than that. She's also involved in assisting and as an advocate for our ELL and Hispanic families, like I am for our Native American families. So she does do a lot of translating and community networking. She recently partnered with the community and put on an event, and this is what the picture is from. There was a Day of the Dead event at the Kuspa Public Library, where our Latinx club came and volunteered, so they can earn their volunteer hours, and put on an event. They always have a really, really great attendance, and so we want to spotlight her because she will never talk about herself or do her own form. And so just to kind of recognize how much she really does go above and beyond. And you can probably like call her any time of the day. I could call her right now and tell her somebody needed a ride or a report, and she would be there and help translate. And so that is our classified spotlight on the web. Do you have any questions from you?
I love Anne. Of course, she's a bale to me. She's amazing, and I'm so glad she came here.
I do appreciate working with her. Sometimes I say smart things, and I don't remember what I said. And Anne now knows when I start in that mode, she turns on her, like, video. It was something that we learned during culvers.
And on the subject of book fairs, I did get word from Mr. Roberts, Milokoma's fair starts Wednesday and runs through next week.
I think. They do it in the spring.
Oh, they're doing it in the spring. He said he has the space problem. I'm not sure that they've done one for a while.
What's nice, though, is about having the, like, campuses together is that you don't have to wait for your school. You can attend a fall and a spring conference, and you can go to all of them. Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
It was the first time this year. Take care.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we're going to hear from Lisa Russell, introducing us back to Madison.
All right, well, hello. Most of you don't know me, so we'll start there. I'm Lisa Russell, and I'm the first-year principal at Madison Elementary. I came from Reeseport the year before that, and then Idaho for 15 years over that. So newly transplanted. All right, so first I want to start by just talking about the purpose of a data review. This is to share our beginning of the year goals. So our starting point is to set performance goals for our students and for our teachers to track students' progress and their success, to make informed decisions, evaluate staff, and offer support for coaching, create a positive school culture, and of course, celebrate success and increase motivation. Okay, so this is our attendance for the district. So Madison is right here, and this is a snapshot for the last two weeks. So the district as a whole has achieved over between 80% to 90% attendance rates for the past two weeks, and Madison has 91% for these two weeks. We're also celebrating this week the arrival of four new students at Madison, so we're excited to have them join us.
Is that one over there? It's our destinations?
They're on.
That's right.
Okay, so first I want to give a shout out to my amazing instructional coach, Lillian Erb. She did a presentation with these slideshows. She's my interventionist, and so she, I asked if I could borrow her slides with her permission, and of course, she graciously shared them. So this is an overall snapshot of our proficiency, beginning of year growth goals. So we've got kindergarten here, and first grade to the middle, second grade at the bottom. So you can see that we're starting out with 75% in that red, well below benchmark, which is totally normal for kindergartners coming in. They haven't, most of them haven't been to preschool or in the school structure yet. So we're starting at ground one with them. That equates to 54 students in total. So if you look at it. So if you look at it um, by a student percentage, it's more manageable. Fourteen percent there is the yellow, which is below benchmark. That's ten students. Four percent um, is three students at benchmark and seven percent is five students above benchmark. So overall, um, the decrease through the grade levels as students grow through Madison is um, showing up here as our red is getting significantly lower each year that they go through. Um, and this is greatly in part because this is our third year using Amplify and it has shown to be a very effective program. Go ahead. Uh, the program or the test goes into these categories. Uh, phoneme segmentation is isolating the individual sounds of a word. And this is only assessed in kindergarten and first grade as a grade level. Uh, second grade does it individually as needed. Then we have nonsense words. Uh, nonsense words are used in assessments to determine if students have grasped the alphabetic principles and primary phonics skills. Okay, the next uh, area that we look at is oral reading fluency. So this one has two categories. It's kind of fun because the first is accuracy and then the second is called fluency fluency. So the accuracy is how many words per minute, correct words per minute that a student reads. And as we know, reading fluency has been identified as a key component for successful readers. And then fluency fluency is um, counting in their accuracy, counting their errors. Fluency is counting in their speed. So we can look at their accuracy and, and pinpoint specific phonics patterns that they might need more instruction on and help boost their fluency fluency, which is their rate of speed and decode. Okay, this slide I love because it's a three-year overview. Oh, I'm so glad that that has. Is there a way to make that go away or no? Um, if not, it's okay.
We can kind of see where it might be.
Okay, so what is really great about this one that I, I loved um, in Lillian's presentation was you can look at it by grade level. So here we are, this bottom one is the twenty-four, twenty-five this year. And then going back the last three years. So you can look at it by grade level and see now where we are needing to focus more um, energy and time, of course kindergarten being new. But then first grade is decreasing and second grade is decreasing, starting out this year. So that's showing that we have consistency through the grade levels. So we call that um, vertical alignment. And then if you look at it by cohorts, okay? So if you're looking at, let's say we take this kindergarten group here and then we follow them to this. So this is twenty-two, twenty-three kindergartners. Follow them to the next year of first grade, twenty-three, twenty-four. And then finally to this year of second graders. You can see this red started out real big. And then here the next year, significant decrease. And then here we are in second grade. So you can see over time, the last three years, that that cohort is coming in at a much higher skill level. So that was a great one to refer to.
Is it a, it's interesting in your grade one, I guess, last year, the one in the middle, the line in the middle. On all of them seems to be a real, yeah, touch point. When things increase, what was that?
Okay, so first grade is, when we go from, in kindergarten, we have basic alphabetic principles, right? And they do some sight words, but it's mostly just knowing their letters, names and sounds. And then we have predictable um, two-letter words or three-letter CVC words. And first grade is when we enter digraphs and blends, so three-letter to four-letter words. And so the skill is increasing um, in complexity. And so it's a lot harder and quicker paced um, time in their, in their learning than kindergarten or second grade. Second grade adds in the component of fluency and comprehension and vocabulary, which is taught and assessed in those grade levels. But that's kind of the focus of second grade, so it's um, different skills, I guess, that it highlights. Okay, nonsense word fluency, this was one as a teacher that I always didn't understand. It drove me crazy because as a kid, I wanted to read a word that makes sense. So I didn't understand why we have to have these silly words like um, fad, or that's kind of a real word, but like dak or something like that. That's not, it's a nonsense word. It's not an actual word. And um, the reason that we do these words is because it uh, teaches the phonics instruction and assesses their ability to associate that letter sound knowledge and to read the word phonetically instead of memorizing it or guessing it, which is what we used to teach. I kind of touched on this with the accuracy. Um, this one here, the striped line are kiddos that came in not yet able to do the assessment. And so um, that's kind of, I guess you could call it like a grayed out area. And again, that's that three-year progression. Okay. And then the fluency fluency, and it shows us in three years again that we are decreasing that red zone and making progress. All right, on to math. So math has two assessments at the beginning of the year. And the first one is called the screener assessment. That one just tells us where they're coming in to place them into a diagnostic assessment. So we had a lot of kids coming in what we call on-grade level, which means they're ready to learn the skills for that year and not as much coming in like significantly below where we would have to. Let's say there was a second grader, we might have to adjust the curriculum to like the first grade starting of the year curriculum to fill their learning needs. And so kindergarten, we don't assess that because it automatically puts them into that first um, level A assessment, assuming that they are coming in with no skills or little skills. And so first grade there and second grade, we can use that information to tell us that we really do need to have some added support in the second grade math. Okay, and then this diagnostic assessment is where we take apart the skills that kids need to learn. So we've got fifty-nine point five percent, which is a hundred and forty-one students coming in and says does not meet um, this, the skills, the standard. But something important to, to know about this is first, this is our first year using this math curriculum. So this is a different style of assessment than they've used in the past. Maybe some harder strategies, clicking and dragging on the computer that they're not used to. Um, and then of course, the teachers are learning the program, which every program varies slightly. And then this also is testing them on that grade levels skill, which means in essence, the goal for the end of that grade level. So they're coming in below, of course, but we, as we track the data throughout the year, we do it in January, February time, and then we do it at the end of the year to um, track that they are learning those skills and on track to meet that end of year mark. So here it is by grade level. So the um, first grade right here, second grade, Kinder. Again, all the Kinder just starts with the same test. The first grade breaks it into two tests. These are the significantly below. And then the ones that are just coming in right at grade level. And then same for the second grade significantly below and then right on grade level. Okay, and so we track a lot of data, attendance. You just met Bree and you know Bree. She's our attendance advocate. And she communicates with families that might need help with transportation, possibly um, some illness. And we have some people that work with the medical field that can help get doctors appointments or medicine arrangements for rides, things like that. And then we have our great system, a parent square that sends a daily uh, email to me, text to parents as soon as they are absent. I think it's nine o'clock. Is the time if the child hasn't arrived at school that the message goes out to the parents. If the parent comes in at nine-ten, they're still going to get that message. But know that we do go in and, and hand, you know, mark them present, but they um, it monitors, it sends the message to me so that I'm aware um, and to the parent and to the office, of course, and the teacher, I think as well. Okay, oops. And then for ELLA, um, we are going to be working on more differentiated instruction during core reading. So what that means is the teacher has their, their core reading time and then they have small group time that they're hitting those skills that are lagging and really fine tuning um, with maybe five or six kids or something like that in a small group while the other kids are doing uh, boost on the Amplify, which is a program that adjusts to their uh, learning needs, whether it's high or on grade level. We had our whole class MTS meetings. This was really cool to me. I've never done this in seventeen of teachings. So we met with teachers one at a time. And we looked at the data, we looked at their kiddos. Um, every single kid in that class. The teachers first took the stickers and placed them from the teacher's eyes, how they felt that that student was doing at the beginning of the year. So you'll notice some of these kids in here might be that red um, on the assessment, which I as the administrator would say, oh, we need a plan for this kid. But the teacher knows this kid, knows that if they're picking up the skills these two months that they've been working with them, they know they might have some uh, social emotional problems going on, family problems going on, uh, something like that, that um, they're just not testing well, may have some anxiety or something like that. And so this is the teacher's view of those kids rather than the computers view. Um, if they have behavior needs, we talk about, is this kid that needs an IEP? Or is this something else intervention team can work with the kids? Um, or SEL team. The academics is the intervention team. And then up here is kind of the both. They kind of need help from both teams. Life skills, if we have any life skills. And then these are kind of like on the watch. Those teachers know every single student in their classroom. And as a school, we are tracking every single student and making sure they're having their needs met and that they um, are making progress. Every two to three weeks, they do progress monitoring with the kids. I really think that could be. And math, again, newly adopted math curriculum. And then we have something that's called Success Maker, which the superintendent sent out um, a, a great explanation of that is individually and a program that's individualized to that student. So they can be on there for ten minutes, thirty minutes, depending on grade level. That is meeting their needs individually and they have seen success already to share with us. Okay, so fun things happen. So we have um, a program called Character Strong. It's our SEL program. And each month we highlight a character trait. Um, for September, it was respect. October was responsibility. And then November is gratitude. So teachers nominate um, a student from their class that is showing one of those characters. They get their picture and face on the wall. It's right by the front office, so anybody coming in and out can see it. And then they get to take the certificate home and we, our dean of students gives a personal phone call home and celebrates that student for having those positive traits. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and to share with you all the great things that we're doing in those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just skip the question.
Lisa, I I sort of asked, this, this helped me understand as well. So it's, it's nice to see now that we've been doing the uh, ELLA curriculum, that you can actually see the benefit that we're actually having. But that's, that's really exciting to see. I just wondered, you know, if my understanding is that data is normed nationally, right? So I just try to interpret, when I look at that large, you know, red section, especially with our kindergartners coming in, to me that says that our kids coming in are, are behind where they would be on a national level, right? So we're really, we've just really showed us the challenges we have because our students did a lot of work to make up over time. Is that, is that correct understanding?
Do we have those numbers for the state? Um, and, and national?
So um, kindergarten through second grade doesn't have a state test. The state testing starts in third grade, so that's the I test. We don't have that national test, but we do have uh, the Amplify program, which is, I don't know the number, but significantly used across the nation. So we have a high number percentage of schools and districts and states that use Amplify. We just adopted it in Idaho, so it's a very popular curriculum. So that would be equivalent to.
Pretty good sample size.
Yeah.
Are, are, well, they're outside the norm.
So, oh, okay. All right.
I mean, we know that our, we know that our area is having the challenges academically.
Is that because of the lack, the kids coming in without preschool?
Without skills.
Yeah, so you know your area best. I can only speak of Idaho and how we uh, did things. Um, I know in Idaho as a parent, my first set of kids, I was shocked at how quickly people start preschool there. And there's a preschool pretty much on every corner, uh, just in home, moms opening a preschool. And um, we had a lot of moms that were stay-at-home moms that had college degrees and stuff that just so starting them young is, is significantly a strength. Um, that's part of it. And then there's also other things, consistency in your home and routines and parents that work multiple jobs that don't have a lot of time one-on-one with your kids, just talking to your kids. Don't talk baby talk, talk like an adult. Read them, add that vocabulary, yeah, and read them, of course, yeah.
I was just gonna ask, how is your um, adjustment to Kuspa? Reeseport, the big city.
From Reeseport?
No, I'm from Idaho.
Oh, okay, I was saying, uh, very similar. Southeast, so Idaho Falls by the Montana border and Wyoming border.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, and what drew me to this area is that the culture and the small-town family feel is, is very much the same. Even the terrain is very similar. We were more flat, so I love the mountains. We're about an hour away from where I live, so. Um, but just the people, the first time I came for some job interviews, um, I had to stay by myself in a hotel. Or I was in a camper trailer, excuse me, and I didn't have money for, to wash my clothes. And this lady gave me her card and I could tell it was probably her last couple of dollars. And she just gave it to me so willingly. And so I just, those little things that just really stick with you, like this is a really caring community and feeling family strong.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Nice job.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Shelley.
Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody. I miss McDowell. Oh, well, it's good to see everybody again. Um, you're sitting in a gentleman order this time, so it's kind of threw me walking in.
Variety is the spice of life.
That's right.
I'm sure he has a DVD and master plan.
To confuse the speakers. Um, okay, thank you, David. Um, we started out the first slide with this um, the Kuspa. Um, um, go back one please, the um, sorry, just, there you go, yeah. Um, the one compass, one crew, one mission, which is, is where I feel like is our uh, signature statement um, for the district. Um, go ahead, David. Um, this is just a profile um, of Sunset students, in case you um, aren't aware. We have three hundred and seventy-nine students in the mall, seventeen classroom teachers, eight specialists that are certified and eleven education. Uh, beginning of the school year demographics, we have twenty-four ELL or English language learners, uh, twenty-two students in our alternative life schools program, uh, eight students on public programs, uh, twenty-three students who are tech, tech identified, um, sixty students receiving speech services, thirty-eight tribal students, I don't know if you're still here. Um, thirty-six students in uh, special education in the third and fourth grades, uh, thirty-seven students in the fifth and sixth grades and twelve um, students in our structured learning center. Um, so that boils down to about twenty-eight percent of our students at Sunset who are special education identified. Um, I had to look at this photo because it is an often that you get kids that look to be so excited about learning math. And they were thrilled because they had um, won a contest. Their teacher had uh, divided the students into groups. They all had to, you know, sort of uh, solve a, a series of problems. And uh, whoever, whichever group did it within the timeframe, got all the answers correctly, won the contest. And so these guys were thrilled because they won. And so these guys were thrilled because they won.
Did Kevin have to pay an endorsement for the advertisement?
We will sponsor.
Um so yeah, so we're gonna look at our data. Okay, so this was our uh school report card for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And I gotta say, when I saw it, I was heartbroken, a little, a little disappointed, I would say. Um but looking at it, we can see that our class size has increased. Our attendance has um had a positive increase. There hasn't been a change in English language charts from last year to the year before. Uh had a slight dip in math, a one percent dip in math last year. And then our fifth grade um science data um thirteen percent lower last year from the year before. On the state test. Go ahead, David. So this is gonna look similar to what you looked at for Madison. Um this is the third grade, so incoming third graders coming from Madison. They are scoring forty-five percent of those students are scoring at benchmark and above. So third graders are coming in really strong this year from Madison. Go ahead. Um third, this is last year, so this year's fourth graders, I wanted to point out their year-end data. And this is by teacher, so by each class, where they were at the end of the year last year. Um thirty-seven percent of our students were at or above grade level. Go ahead, clarify. So same cohort, right? Now they're in fourth graders, beginning of the year. They're thirty-six percent at or above. One percent drop. We did have some students come and go. Um and um when you think about sort of that fear of summer slide. Um our students came in nearly where they were when they left at the end of the school year. So that was encouraging. Go ahead, David. Um again, our current fifth graders end of year, they um had thirty-two percent of students were at or above. Grade level. Go ahead, David. And as entering fifth graders, um forty percent. So there's a gain. And where they were at the end of the year last year to the beginning of the year this year. And this is all dibbles assessment, so English language. And then go ahead, David.
With this one on.
So, I'm sorry?
Oh, I wasn't sure if I skipped too.
No, you're good, you're good. So end of year, fifth, uh fifth graders, forty-three percent of our students were at or above um grade level. And then sixth grade coming in, there was that summer slide again. Um thirty-seven percent of students were at or above benchmark coming in at sixth graders. Savas uh math, our new math curriculum. Um this, this data was a little bit harder to um. To get. Um I'm still learning how to um extract the data from Savas. But what um what I had was our lovely Rose Simpson, who is able to help me extract that data. So looking at third grade math. Um seven percent of our students are at or above grade level, fourteen percent are approaching. And seventy-nine percent are below or far below. Now, keep in mind, just as a reminder, I, I see your face, um Addie. This, this, they're being measured on what they should know by the end of the year. Okay, so we expect them to be, you know, have some lower scores at this point. We don't expect them to know everything that they should have learned by the end of the year. Looking at fourth grade, we have three percent of students at or above grade level, eighteen percent approaching. And seventy-nine percent below or far below. Fifth grade math, ten percent at or above grade level, eight percent approaching and eighty-two percent below or far below. And then sixth grade. One percent at or above, ten percent approaching grade level and eighty-nine percent below or far below.
Are these, do we compare these? It's Savas is both for um Sunset and Melachoma.
Yes.
So.
Savas is K.
Right.
Eight.
So, so have we compared these to our, to our Melachoma? Before as well to see, is it all the same pretty much, number wise?
You know, that's a good question. I watched Gary's presentation to the board last month.
I was embarrassed.
And I can't, I can't recall where they were at. I think their scores are a little bit higher than ours are.
Yeah, we, we have the data. Um I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. The comparisons, I, I don't think when we looked at last, there's huge, a huge variance. In terms of performance, but it will be interesting to see over time.
Yeah. And you know, I'm excited to see how students do this year with the new math curriculum. Um if you go to the next slide. That's just a visual for you. Sometimes it's easier to look at a paragraph than data. And so again, the red would indicate low, yellow approaching and the blue uh meets. Um but again, we, we're not expecting our third graders, fourth graders, fifth graders or sixth graders to know now. At the start of the school year, what they, what we really are expecting them to know at the end.
So this is, in that way, this is particularly helpful in terms of trying to assess.
It's just the beginning.
Where, where the kids are today.
What it does is that, the way that it's helpful is it gives us the data.
Yeah, so later it will be helpful.
So this is typical, this is typical of Savas. Across, I'm assuming it's kind of like, you know. Our Amplify curriculum that is across the nation and we've got numbers and most students come in at like sixth grade at the eighty-nine percent or below. Is that, is that accurate, would you say?
I don't know. Honestly, I can't answer that.
Okay.
So have we compared that, especially the kids that have met with our tag kids? To see if they are the same and secondarily, are we doing something? If there is a group that have met all of the requirements for the grade level, they are not gonna learn anything new the whole year. So unless we do something else with them, they will get very bored. So are we doing anything with those kids?
Yeah, so that's been a, a big topic of discussion this year about differentiation because. Up, up until this year, we have talked a lot about supporting the kids in red and in the yellow. But this year, we're talking much more about supporting students that are in the blue. And offering them extension, offering them maybe a sixth grader to be able to go up to the junior high for math. Um those kinds of things are now being discussed with our new leadership.
Yeah, because I mean, one of the things that you're talking about is how do we get more advanced kids in math and middle school. You aren't gonna get them there if you don't take the kids that are already going and help move them back.
Right. So challenging those students that are performing in the blue.
Or giving them deeper understandings of the same concepts.
Yeah.
I mean, either way it works, so they're ready when they take the next step.
So that's the beauty of um Success Maker. Um and Rose, I don't, you correct me if I'm wrong. But Success Maker meets the students where they are and helps them to build scope beyond. Um so that's the intervention program. Um so I think Success Maker was probably really designed to, to. Work for the kids in the red and in the yellow, but will also support the students in the blue.
It's America.
Yeah, it's adapted, thank you. And our students are um for the most part, every grade level. Um getting an hour a week of Success Maker um support. For the hour a week? Yes. Okay, so um in September, um we met as a um team. Um all of our uh teachers, classified and administrative staff to develop goals for this year. So we're hoping by the end of semester one, our low-grade level composite scores, so those scores that I was just showing you in ELA. Will um improve by at least fifteen percent for those students um scoring uh. Um below or way below grade level. And we will measure those with our dib, uh dibbles and the Amplify and there's intervention assessments. Math, we're looking for the same increase of a fifteen percent growth. And we will be using um our cement, the math intervention tools to mention. Go ahead, David. Attendance, we also did an attendance goal. Um so last year, our regular attenders throughout the school year was at fifty-eight or fifty-six, sorry. Fifty-six point eight percent. Um this year, we initially, when we met as a team, we had a goal of um eighty percent. Right? And then our attendance advocates met with us and said, okay, great. They think you wanna do that and, and that's a really great goal, but it's probably very locked. And so they talked me into um moving, you know, moving the needle ten percent. The good news is, go ahead, David. We have had, is that blurry to you?
It's really small.
Thank.
Really blurry.
Okay.
Very blurry.
And it's blurry. It, it wasn't on my screen. Um, okay, so here's the good news. For the month of September and the month of October, school-wide, we have had eighty-nine percent positive attendance. So we're starting off really strong and that gets me really excited. And makes me think, ooh, maybe we can get to, you know, have eighty percent for the whole school year. Um I, I'm probably being a little Pollyanna about it, but. But we're do, we're working hard to try and um make sure our students are coming to school. Um the uh parent square makes those um contacts home. Parents are able to respond, excusing their students through the parent square, communicate with me. Um every day I get a summary of how many students were absent for the day. Every day, all the way leading up to October thirty-first was so good. So excited seeing that eighty-nine percent. And then November first, the day after Halloween, oh, double. We had double the amount of student absence of the day after Halloween. So um that was a little disappointing, but I'm looking forward to seeing what November will bring.
You could be scheduled Halloween on a Friday.
Yeah. Okay.
It could be that you could be a disaster. I am skip one, I skip this.
No, keep going. I, I did the data for it already. Um and then just, you know, a little bit of good news. I was told to keep this, you know, short, sweet and to the point and so I didn't wanna. I think there were more things that I wanted to talk about, but I'll save that for this round. For this, um we had the um members of their Trailblazer um. Um organization come to Sunset School. Uh Michelle Boyce organized this assembly. And um it was funny because our students were all the way leaning up to the assembly, are there gonna be players? You know, they're hoping that players are coming. And we didn't really know. Um as we set it up, they weren't really telling us who was going to come. So right before the assembly, we discovered that there were not gonna be any players. But there were gonna be the mascots, there were gonna be some cheerleaders, they're gonna play some games with the kids. And it was so great because I thought that there would be, you know, some boo-hooing by some of our. Some of our athletes are for not getting to see any players. They were so positive, the kids loved it, they had a great time. They had this wonderful competition for our students. Um they came with gifts, they had a huge bag of um. Reset ball to um contribute to the school. And then at the end of it, they presented us with a signed um basketball that had all of the players. Signature on it. And they gave a test to use as, you know, if we wanna travel at all, if we wanted to. Use it as some sort of pride or something like that. So we haven't really decided what to do with it yet. But it's sitting in my office and every time a student comes in there, whether they're in trouble or they're just having some time with me, whatever it is. So it was a really positive experience for our kids. And there you have it. And you're not allowed to.
Thank you.
Any questions?
That's good.
No, okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
We're at that part of the agenda. Ron, to you, Justin.
Okay, yeah. No, I, um thank you to um our two principals for their, their presentation. I, I just sitting here as we talk about instruction and data, student outcomes. I'm excited because we've spent, I feel like three quarters of our meeting talking about outcomes, achievement, kids, right? So that's, that's encouraging. Uh your question, uh remember Robyn about math? It, that is the challenge of teaching, right? Not all of our kids are in the seventieth percentile. All right, you have kids in the ninetieth percentile, below the twentieth percentile, on the fiftieth percentile. And really the art and science of teaching, and it's hard, I'm not saying this as it's easy. This is the, maybe the hardest part of teaching, is meeting the needs of all those kids, right? And it is, it is definitely a science and art to pull that off. But you are correct, if we don't challenge those kids who are above grade level. We're not gonna meet that target of, my, my goal, my, and I don't even know if it's ambitious, but I like to see twenty percent of our kids in high school. Roll in calculus. And I say that's, that's the national average. Twenty percent of kids are enrolled in calculus class. And uh not because everybody's gonna be an engineer or a professor, but we need kids to go into STEM fields. Right, which are high-paying, high-demand jobs. So. We're only gonna do that by raising the bar and those students who are ready, I talked to Principal Robert State, he's got some kids, we wanna give them the, the middle school. If they're ready for algebra and geometry, you've heard me say before, solid four porous ceiling. There are kids, you have to accelerate them. Or they'll get bored, right? So I'll jump into my presentation. Uh the, you know, our mission statement, uh which I really like because I think it's, I think it's concrete. I think it's tangible and it balances short-term and long-term outcomes. So short-term, knowing our students by names, their strengths, their needs. And that long-term goal, it's not just a high school goal, three A's is a K-12 goal. There's all those options. So they have those options, that's created, that foundation happens at the elementary and middle school. My report, uh goals, I'm gonna go through the principal evaluation. I, I, I wanna start having a public. Some public discourse about AP seminar. I know I've talked to you guys uh off the record, behind the scenes. I've talked to uh our principals, I've talked to a few teachers at Marshall High School, they're really excited. Um about that movement, but I think it's time to now start to have that conversation publicly. As a, as a potential graduation requirement. And then um I did quick data snapshot, um calendar and good things. Superintendent goals, we, we can move on. I think the first one is maybe the most important. Piece is raising the academic expectations. Principal evaluation. So principal evaluation, there was, COVID has been mentioned a couple times. So COVID created obviously challenges, but opportunities. So coming out of COVID, a lot of schools and districts needed to reevaluate, reassess programs and systems, right? There was sort of pause put on things or in some areas backwards. And so we needed to look at our principal evaluation uh model. To me, the principal evaluation model is a reflection of priorities. Uh the previous model, the standards have stayed the same. I think the standards are sound, there's six standards. What I didn't like about the previous model is it created, it treated all the standards the same. They were all equal and they're not all equal, right? So I'll just give you an example, ethical leadership to me is implied, if we're not ethical, we shouldn't be in these positions. So I'm not gonna give it the same credence as I'm gonna give instructional leadership. So as I went through the process, use the standards, instructional improvement is thirty percent. Of a principal's job, visionary leadership, twenty, inclusive practices, really important to me. Really, really important that we are leading as instructional leaders with our tag students. Our students with IEPs, our students from special populations. And we're making sure those students are, are learning and growing, can get around it, management is part of the job. Being a principal is an extremely challenging job. It is, as one of these members knows sitting up here, it is very demanding. There are a lot of constituents, parents, unions, superintendents, board members, community members. Uh that you have to interface with, work with. It's a hard job. And you could be, if you're not careful, you can be, I like to call it, you're in a fireman mode if you're not careful, right? And so it's gonna take some learning. And so it's going to take some learning and some adapting on all of us to be able to adjust our systems and our habits to focus on these things. So the six, the six standards, these, these are the same standards. Again, I I've adjusted the rubric, the criteria and and the and the weighting of the model. I jumped ahead, this is, this is, and I've had a lot of conversation with our principals about this. For our principals to be instructional leaders, not only do they have to change their habits, our support staff has to change their habits. And what I mean by that is they have to absorb some of those non-instructional tasks, some of those management tasks. So that our principals and assistant principals can be instructional leaders. So I'm asking that a third of their day be directly tied to instructional leadership. Now, that doesn't mean a third of the day, it can mean classrooms. That's just one, that's one component of instructional leadership. If I'm working on a master schedule, that's instructional leadership. If I'm working with the department heads, instructional leadership. If I'm interviewing teachers, that's instructional leadership. If I'm working on a budget and I'm trying to allocate money to instruction, that's instructional leadership. But for them to execute this, the support staffs are going to have to change some of their habits and systems. Sometimes, unfortunately, our our principals will become a bell pro, right? And everything sticks to them and and instructional leadership is the most important thing you do. So it's backed by research, you guys know I love research. Um, you can see here, uh, again, effect size number point four is the hinge point. And anything that's that has an impact on student achievement. Basically, what you're doing is you're measuring the impact, the the relationship between two variables. If you look at the fourth one, teacher uh development, it has an effect size of point eight-four. That's a, that's a high impact. So if I'm a principal, I'm working with teachers to improve instruction, that is a high-yield strategy. And you can see the rest, the first one is is point four-two. Um, so this is not just me making these things up, these things are, these things are backed by research. The next slide we've talked about several times, I'll continue to bake this into our our culture, our language. Um, again, collective teacher efficacy has an effect size of one point five-seven, that's four times point four. It's almost four times, right? And I think the operative word there is collective. It's not Justin's teacher efficacy, it's our efficacy as a system, as a school. And then we create the conditions, right? And we we have ownership of results and we believe in kids. And here's the, here's the secret sauce in it. The kids know that we believe in them. That's the secret sauce. The kids are smart, they're intuitive, they know when we believe in them, right? And we send, we have to send the right message that we believe in you, we're not going to give up. It's not an opting culture, it's it's a, you need support, you need help, we're going to provide it. And then you can go down the line and see those are all high-yield.
What is student visible?
Those are great, yeah, so student visible learning and we're moving in this direction with uh. So it would be, I know what the objective is, I know what the criteria is of that objective, and I have the ability to assess my own learning. And I could say, I could say to Mr. Robyn, I'm struggling with order of operations, Mr. Robyn. I know that, right? The fancy word for that is called metacognition, I'm thinking about my thinking. So I make it very transparent to kids, this is what the lesson is for today, this is the objective, and here's the criteria um to make sure you understand where we're going. It's, yeah, it's a, it's a high-yield strategy.
Okay, on that one, my youngest daughter, who was a writer and all that, she took the state writing test. Came back, didn't get a score she wanted, and she said, you know that, you need to teach the people to score better. And I said, what do you mean? She said, it was obvious, I gave them every hint that I was doing a Hemingway-type writing. And they were downgrading me on the length of sentence and all these other kinds of stuff. They have no idea what it is to be a writer. Why are they grading me on writing? And I thought, okay, she's done, she knows what she's doing.
Yeah. Yeah, you'll hear the term teacher clarity, and that's what it means. You're you're being very clear about the learning with your students so they can assess themselves. Principal, principal evaluation, uh, principals will establish two uh learning goals and a professional growth goal. Most of our elementary teachers or principals, their goals are around literacy and math. And secondary, there's a, there's a little more variety, and then they establish a professional growth goal. So that could be, I want to know more about the the math adaptive platform, I want to learn more about the science of reading. Um, I want to get better at MTSS, uh, they're going to pick something, uh, some domain within their profession. Okay, so here's the transition. And my eyes are going bad, I can't read this, but I I don't know what most of that said. Um, what's our role? Right? So we talked about principals and and the research is very clear, principals have, can have an impact, a significant impact on student achievement. In fact, for a long time, Chicago came, the University of Chicago came out with a study uh that illustrated us, for a long time, they thought, oh, principals are just managers. They're just managers, they don't really have an, they nominal indirect impact on student learning. And then the University of Chicago did a uh a huge meta-analysis, they said, no, that's wrong. They, if they organize their time, if they allocate their resources and they're leaders and not managers, they might be the most important person in the building. Because they can have an impact in the entire school and not just one classroom. So our our role, um, how does this work? And we're, and we're doing this, right? So the first one is we establish uh non-negotiable goals, we're working on it, you guys have tasked me. We want expectations to increase, doctrine sort of, right? That's a non-negotiable goal. The next step is we establish a metric, and we're going to work on that in our executive session. Our graduation rate is at eighty percent, by the end of the year, we want it to be eighty-five percent, and year three, we want it to be ninety, by year four, we want it to be ninety-five percent. We're at thirty percent proficiency in literacy. In two years, we want to be at fifty percent, in two more years, we want to be at seventy, and our big hairy audacious goal is for ninety percent of the kids. Those are establishing those goals as a board and superintendent. It's us align our resources to match those goals because we can't do everything, right? Money, uh, money is always tight. It's monitoring, that's what we're doing. We're talking about our goal, we're talking about student learning. All right, now that has to trickle down to to admin meetings and PLCs and department meetings. Uh, maintaining a focus on continuous improvement, we're always talking about improvement. This, it's it's hard, yes.
The alignment of resources, though, isn't just money, is it? I mean, resources are teachers.
Thank you, yeah, yeah, it's alignment of PD, right? It's trying to make sure you're getting everything aligned, supports the goal. The hard thing for us is to stay focused, because we're not, we're not going to go through everything, right? So are, these are, these are our goals. And I, and I'll be honest, the principal evaluation, I'm held the same standards, right? Though those, those should be my standards as well. Okay, so we we segue. Again, I want to, I want to start a public discourse about AP seminar. Um, I would like to propose, right now, we're in conversation, there's not a motion, there's not a second. Um, I would like to continue work with the policy committee, um, but look at AP seminars as a graduation requirement. We require, for the state requires four years of language arts. Two of those can be electives, I would like to see AP seminar be one of those electives. I don't come at this from a theoretical position. I've, we have done this, I have some evidence to.
But you're not talking about making it an elective.
No.
Yeah.
But it'd be one of those language arts.
Yeah, it would take the place of.
Correct, yeah. Uh, principals have heard me say this, I really believe in it, in an organization, you have to have a North Star. You have to have something that aligns everybody, K-12, what is that thing that everybody has to rally around to get our kids ready for? And I really, and I, and and mine is AP seminar. Because of, because of the skill. So when you look at AP seminar, this is what I love about it, and there's content flexibility. So within that research project, because that's really what it is, it's a big research project. You have student interest, it could be local, it could be civic, it could be academic problems or questions, or it could be global, international topics. So in Alaska, we had kids often pick the oil industry for obvious reasons. Uh, geopolitics with North Korea, Ukraine, Russia. We had kids pick the decline of the key salmon run because those things were of interest to them locally, right? And so they would take a, what I love about it, because this is a life skill, we know this as professionals, adults. They have to take a position and they have to support that position with evidence. It doesn't matter what position they take, I don't care what position you take, as long as you've researched the topic. And then it helps the kids look at any topic from multiple perspectives. So we take the port project in Housbay, let's just take, that would be a great AP seminar topic, the port project. The kids in that group collectively would need to look at the port project from a political aspect, a historical aspect, which would be great. Because at one point, this was the largest deep-water producing port on, we built the world after World War II, right? Right, so there's a great historical piece, the environmental impact, the economic impact, the scientific impact and the ethical impact. So we would ask kids to look at that topic from all those different layers. And then they're going to take a position. It doesn't matter what position, but it's backed by evidence, they're going to write a paper, they're going to have a presentation, they're going to support that evidence. And if they pass the AP seminar course and they get a qualifying score, that's a cherry on top. That is, that is not the the primary.
So is the, is the paper that they write scored outside at AP?
Yeah, yeah, college board will score the paper, yeah. So these are, I've already gone through this, these are some of the the outcomes. Uh, I jumped ahead, again, this is not from a conceptual, theoretical base, this is from a practitioner. Um, there's a lot of data here, I'll try to situate you, that red line um is the national qualifying production rate for AP. In the country, that blue line was my former district. You can see at the very, very bottom, where it bottoms out. And we kept talking about this, our AP program was dying. We had about a production rate of four, that means for every hundred kids to take an AP exam, we have four kids pass it. We were bodying, bodying out, and there was a huge shift. Now that district is above the national average. There's a production rate of twenty. The next one, and this is a lot of data, I love this, I just love this slide. Um, these were nine of our high schools. I want you to focus on the two arrows. So production rate. How many kids pass the AP exam out of every hundred kids? The first yellow dashed line, that's Career Tech High School. Career Tech High School is a very affluent middle, upper-middle-class school. Their production rate is over forty. So for every hundred exams, forty kids pass that exam, right? Lots of resources, lots of parents with college degrees um at that school. The next two schools, Colony High School is similar, it's a middle-class um demographic, they're close to forty. The one that makes me the most proud and our team up there is the red. They're almost, and I'll say, and I'll say this, that school is this is similar in size and demographics to Marshall High School. There is a large percentage of students with IEPs at that school. Many of those students come from broken homes, and many of those students come from uh low SES backgrounds, low income. Their AP qualifying scores have almost surpassed two schools that are vastly different in demographics than them. And I would attribute to this collective teacher advocacy in that school and strong leadership. And so that is, I think they're going to write white papers someday about Wausau High School and their and their production rate. So lots of data there, but I, again, this is coming from a practical base, not a theoretical. Return on investment, I'll use Colony High in exam as an example, twelve hundred students, a thousand exams. Four hundred and eighty of those thousand were passing qualifying exams.
Four or three.
Uh, three, four, five.
Okay.
Yeah, anything above the three. So here's the return on investment, for every one of those exams that was passed, that's equivalent to around fifteen hundred dollars in college course. That equates to over seven hundred thousand dollars in scholarships in one year. So the return on investment, I'd have to do the math on this, for us to pay for the eighty-dollar exam, it is a significant return on tax dollar investment. And again, that is just the icing on the, on the top.
So that's each exam?
Each exam.
So it was like eight or nine, ten?
Oh, there's thirty now, yeah, yeah.
So there could be a kid taking ten exams.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and there, there are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we had some, we had a kid go to MIT who passed fifteen.
Yeah.
He's an outlier, that's not. Expectation. We actually had a lot of conversation uh about, we had some kids, we had to protect from themselves a little bit academically. You know, some of those kids, they put so much pressure and stress on themselves, you have to have a pretty nuanced conversation with parents and kids. But, you know, there are kids who'll tell you, I can do it, right? You just have to, you got to watch them. So some of those leading indicators that we'll continue to track, um, our principals went through this, we're at about a ninety percent district average daily membership. Kind of flattened out a little bit here. Um, you can see the schools, our district average is ninety, ninety-one percent average daily membership, which is good. Progress, if we can stay at ninety, I would, I'd be thrilled if we could stay at ninety as a district. Secondary grades, I'm I'm a little bit, I've got a lot of questions about our secondary grades. Because right now, we have office hours, proficiency-based grading, um advisory, we have a lot of things in place. I always say our goal should be less than ten percent failure. And we've kind of plateaued at fourteen, and if I add Ds and Fs, twenty-three percent of our kids are in the red, the secondary level, that concerns me. That's, that's something we we've got to work on, is repair. And then, again, the calendar, tomorrow, I have a, I have a meeting uh with the PLC folks, the Champions early release Friday, some PD. We obviously have the the conference this week, super excited about that. Um, and then we have Veterans Day on the eleventh. We have our politer, polit, not politics, hopefully no politics at any. Yeah, let's get, let's get through, let's get through that. And then Thanksgiving break, and then I'll end with a couple of good things. Uh, man, I was busy at Marshfield High School last week, there were so many good things happening. Uh, the Pirates beat uh our cross-town friends, right? The Fish Village of the North, they beat them in the Civil War, which was awesome, great game. Um, our pirate volleyball team won the Sky End Championship, and they're going to compete this week in the state tournament. Uh, their first game is at nine on Friday at North Bend. I had the opportunity, I'm trying to, uh, I want to get out with students and student leadership. I met with an outstanding group of student leaders at the junior high, they were awesome, thirty minutes. They, they just, they love their school, they love their teachers, the administration, but they gave, gave me some good feedback, some things to work on, right? Take those back, their future is bright for those kids. And then we had the Hall of Fame banquet on Saturday, there was four new inductees. And just every time I, it's been a long time since I've been to it, but what a galvanizing event for the community. I, not everybody does that. It's, it's pretty cool, and that's a pretty unique event to this community. And the last thing I'll say, I don't know if you guys are aware, but let's make sure we thank Toyota for the car giveaway. Most important part of it is the pirate family.
When the car, so.
How much money did the kids ultimately get?
I don't, that's a great. They stood at the game. And they said that Marshall kids, it was like twenty-one thousand three hundred, North Bend was seventeen thousand eight hundred.
That's great.
That's a lot of money for that car.
Yeah.
And all of it went one hundred percent to the individual group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you get a chance, thank, thank Toyota, that's pretty good.
And they're doing it again.
They showed the car, they had it on, it's a bigger car.
Yeah. So that's all I have, I don't know if you have any more questions, we'll continue the conversation about AP seminar.
I actually have a quick question, I know you guys want to get out of here, but about the AP seminar. You had a graph up there that said in twenty twenty, it looked like that school was bottoming out on the AP seminar. And then there was, what was contributing to kind of that upswing, what changed from that point?
Yeah, that is a great, I got a lot of theories on that. Um, so it was hockey stick, I call it hockey stick rope, right? It was like this. So one was AP seminar became graduation requirement. Two, the students started to believe in themselves, right? Because that, that's why I like it as a sophomore class, because now I get in, it's what we call kind of a soft entry point in the AP. And then once they get the confidence to go, oh. I, I passed this class. I, I can, I can do this. Then they say. Take AP US history. Or I'm gonna take AP biology, or I'm gonna take AP stats. So it gives them a springboard. And then I think that some of the teachers started to believe, oh, the, the AP world is actually not gonna fall apart. Here, I could talk about this forever. Here's what's crazy. Our traditional AP students actually started to do better. Once we open it up to everybody. And I got a couple of theories on that, but I have to, I have to be offline.
Biggest thing would be to find the right teacher.
Yeah.
The teacher that teaches the sophomore class of that kind.
Yeah.
Has to really be engaged with kids and which, and give them the skills to do stuff. Cause if you don't know how to write a paper, if you don't know how, I mean. It, there's a lot of skill based in that.
Yeah. I think we got the right people in Marshville who are believers.
Okay, yeah.
I think it was interesting too, just to kind of on top of the off, something you said with the ACT or the test that they took. I think a lot of the kids psyched themselves out. Because they had never done that before.
Yeah.
But then talking to a lot of kids afterwards, I get to interact here and there and they were like, I don't know why I was so psyched out. Like they didn't, it wasn't as bad as they thought it was gonna be. Maybe when you're a freshman, it doesn't have the impact maybe as when you get older, but. They were really psyched out, but then afterwards they're like, oh.
Yeah.
Okay, I can do this.
I know more than I think.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, and it probably gave them some confidence, uh, going forward. So, yeah.
Well, especially if they get a good score.
Yeah. Yeah.
It was great for me. I remember taking that test. I, I thought I was a specialized kid.
Yeah.
Look at that. I can have.
But I can take the test. It's a good test.
I wish that was our state assessment to be honest.
Yeah.
Okay, so am I wrong that Marina's not here?
Marina is not here. She did write you guys a nice letter. That is in your packets on page sixty-two.
But it's not because she had the baby earlier or anything.
Not yet.
Marina's a little busy right now. She has, of course, she has it scheduled.
Yes.
All as it should be.
All as it should be. That's right. Yep, we like those. Okay. You have the letter from Marina, so we won't.
You don't need to lose it.
Uh. Chad. We have made you wait during the entire meeting.
So I have good information. That is our. Our annual high level. On report out on our, where we're at with the integrated plan. And it's high level in that. Um, it's, it's too much really, you'd have to study it and come back with questions. But feel free to do so, you know, by email or invite me to a board meeting where you wanna talk about it further. But David has the part, our district targets, and these are things that Justin keeps repeating to us over and over and over. And he's doing that intentionally and these are kind of my words for it. And they relate to some of the superintendent goals that you set for him. That he has up on a poster in his office that he points to quite a bit when we're in there to keep us really focused. He's doing that intentionally. I mean, he's, he's driven on it. He's talking to us on it on Monday morning, all of us. He's talking about it every chance he gets. And so I just kind of boiled those down a little bit and you know, in, in relating those to his goals. Um, the, this one up here, I would say is probably closest to the, the raise academic expectations. And then this one down here, I mean, it speaks for itself, the alternative education pathways. Which I think is his goal number four on that list.
And then this page sixty-eight in your packet.
Thank you.
It's not much easier to read, but.
A little bit. And since this is our high level meeting, these are our goals that we originally set, the outcomes. What we are looking for, like for instance, foster safe and welcoming school climate, which is really beginning related. And then improve attendance. That's what we're looking to do. And then be there and here are the strategies, the things that we're trying to put in place to address those. And I just color coded them. And, and why I did that is in preparing for this meeting, I wanted to take what. The targets are that you've set for the district and what Justin's repeating to us over and over and just make sure we're matching. What, what we, what we're trying to do with our, our, our strategies. And so you'll, you'll see that they're all color coded except for that last group, which is different. That's related more to HR and it relates, but it. It was an add-on to our integrated plan as opposed to the more improving student performance and more engagement. And so I didn't, I didn't really try to color code those. And so what I'm hoping by the color coding is you're seeing that the goals that you're setting for the district and what's being repeated to us over and over and over. To try to get us all channeled and focused and going the same way is what we set here in our plan. We're, we're doing what we said. That we were trying to do. And then if you bring up the, the budget page next, even. And so for accountability purposes, for, um, transparency, high visibility. And also, so you can see and have information that you can ask questions. You'll see this was that next level. These are the expenditures. To address what we were trying to do. And we didn't color code these because it gets a little bit much because it's listed large. But these are actually what we're spending money on to address those. And one of the ads this year is at the bottom of the list. And that's the, the very bottom one down here, the eight to twelve assessments. And that really kind of circles back to, um, some of the cases that Justin was making for the AP seminar. Or increased focus on preparing students, another form of assessment for us to gauge where our students are. And we're trying to, what we're doing here is adding funding. Um, for students to take the AP tests, the SAT, SAT tests and the ACT, ACT tests. A lot of acronyms there. Um, to take away any barriers for students not participating in those tests. So as a district, we're gonna pay for all of those. And so that just take that off the table as a barrier. And it's also putting, you know, it's like the rest of this list, it's putting our money where our mouth is and saying. If we're making this a priority, then we're taking away any of the barriers to it. And now it's left to us to make a case to the students and the families that your students should participate in these and give their, give their all. And it's important to us. We'll use the data to modify what we're doing to address the needs. And it's also making a strong case that the students that we believe that all of you can do this, not just some of you. And giving them the opportunity to show what they can do and us to get the information of what we can do to help.
So we're, we're not suggesting that they take it merely to determine whether or not they're ready to go to college. Just where they are so that we can. Move them forward.
If I'm understanding your question right, I'd say it's both. It's for us to have the information to improve in the areas that we need to for our students. But also to let them know, are you ready? What do you need to do? One of the topics that Justin brought up on the study was, as the question of, I think it was labeled as visible learning. And that's instead of me saying to you, let me show you how to do this thing. And you say, well, what? And I say, I'll just go with me for a while. What I wanna say is, hey, I wanna show you how to do this math problem. Look at it right here. And. What, this is an example of what it looks like when you get there. And I think you're kind of here right now. Do you agree with that? And let's come up with a plan to get you from here to where you're supposed to be. That's a, but it's like saying, hey, what do you think that thing is over there? As opposed to me saying, hey, that's a bicycle. This is what it looks like when you can ride it. Well, let me show you. I mean, let's bring them along for the ride so that they can be a part of saying, this is what I don't understand. Can you help me? Because that's a lifelong skill as it is. But they need to be able to advocate for themselves and say, this is where I stud, this is what I need to know. And that's what I saw in Avid when I was in high school today and Avid tutorial. Um, in the Avid elective class with the tutorials is trying to get this, this group of students to understand that. Hey, this is how you go about learning when you don't know how to do something instead of feeling like, I don't know, I don't get it. Like be an active learner. This is how you advocate for yourself. This is how you say, this is what I need. These are the people you talk to. This is how you form a group to get there. Instead of just leaving them in the dust. That they, if you're. If you're not used to that, if you don't have the modeling in your family, if you're the first one to go to the university, we, we can't take it for granted that they're just gonna figure that out. It's like anything else. Let's show them how to do it. And make them feel that you can make a difference if you try. You know, let's try to make it easier for them. And it's not hit or miss that way. So what I'm hoping you get from this is. And spend some time looking at it. Again, it's too many lines to ask tons of questions in detail tonight, but give it a try if you want. So you have our, our district targets boiled down there in simple format, hoping you're seeing that those are matching the goals that you've set. The superintendent goals. And then you see our, our major categories, which are the outcomes. Our strategies that we're putting in place color coded. To make sure that we're. Doing what we say. And then even further, they, you know, in the building, you can see the numbers, I, on the sheet that, David, the sheet that you gave them actually has the numbers over there. In the far column, right?
Uh, yes, it does.
Where you can see how much.
No, it just says.
It didn't fit all the.
It didn't fit in it.
All exits.
You probably, we can share that. Let's share that with them then.
Yeah, so I'll share the, the actual Excel sheet because I moved it to a PDF for the packet. So I'll send out tomorrow those sheets to you all. So you can actually see the, the funding that's going and from which funds. And these are. These are all the funds that are in the integrated plan.
Can you remind us of what the initials are for the funds that are listed?
Um.
If CSI, TSI.
CSI, that's the extra funding that the. The state is giving our schools because we're not scoring to the level that we're supposed to.
Uh, what's the next category?
Yeah.
Slighted over David's second point tone here.
Um, that's a little bit of funding that we get for either, it's early intervention systems and we get a little bit of funding. We're using that for an MTSS module. Which helps us track students that we're working with. What's the next one, David? It's the high school success. That's, and so the high school success is, it's mainly for nine to twelve, but we can use a little bit for the eighth grade level. A certain percentage and the CIA, we can use district wide. And the CTE funding, there's a line there, but there's nothing in it because that money we work, um, as a, with a consortium. As a consortium through the EST. So that money goes to them and they divvy it out. So I, I don't have it on our sheet. Because we're not, I don't account for that at will.
Do we anticipate like maybe? That these funds are still, we're, I think we're coming up in a biennium and I haven't. Been tracking any, so if there was anything that's been coming out, but do we anticipate like this same type of funding?
They're gonna give us more money.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well then that's good. Just wondering if these funds are going to continue forward. Because it's a biennium coming up and new budgets.
Well, the funding was. Yeah.
Yeah.
Return sometimes during COVID.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously.
It's slightly going up. Right now, we've been receiving a little bit more. They're, they're really fun, they're really stable funds except. For that first category that I said, the CSI, TSI funds. Because if we improve to a certain extent, we'll take those away and funnel them towards a, a school that's, or a district that's not performing. But the rest of those are really stable. Uh, and we're expecting that they'll be somewhere in that range based on how many students we have for the foreseeable future, barring some economic. Catastrophe.
So while we don't wanna lose the money, we wanna get out of that category and. Of needing it.
Yeah. And then we use this planning also, all of these categories for the funds that aren't part of the integrated plan, like Title One, Title Two, all of our titles, all of our. Federal grants, these are state grants on this in the integrated plan. We use the same tool and misinformation to write the plans for all of the. Other grants that we receive. I just, they don't belong to this report. We're really trying to get on, you know, all going in the same way, all of those forces. In the direction of much.
And we appreciate.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other questions for Chad? Sorry we made you stay.
Oh, it was worth it. I wanted to hear all that. Thanks, thank you.
Okay. We are up to facilities committee.
All right. Yeah. So the update for this month was we did a tour. So the tour was at Marshville this round. And then our next meeting will be in person at a, like an actual meeting here. And then the following, we do another school. So our next meeting will be at Sunset School.
No, you skipped one. We did the meeting here.
Yeah, so our next meeting will be at Sunset.
Yeah, yeah, next one's a cool.
Yep. Yeah, next one is tour. So at Marshville, we got to go around to the culinary arts, kind of pick their area out. And we went into the radio, got to do a walk around on that. They talked about the flagpole. They were gonna get a new flagpole. It was kind of. Damaged, so they're gonna get a new one. Um. The fore tiles and some of the classrooms, they got some new fore tiles coming in, some fresh paint. Brian was talking about the new lighting upgrades that we're getting. Um, the basketball hoops have safety straps on them. So if something were to happen, there's a strap holding it up. And then, uh, the baseball area got aerated and a new topsoil put down. And so the baseball is, it's really good. That's like, I'm good. And facilities don't really get it. Thank you. So I wanted to say thank you to Brian and Loma and facilities. And the maintenance crew for getting these projects done and making it happen. And, uh. Also too. We missed you, Kim. So when we get back, when we get ready, we'll do Marshall tour and maybe check some tunnels out and stuff. So we're, we're waiting on that. We didn't do that. So. We said we're gonna wait on that one until you may, so we'll do some schools and then we'll come back. So other schools, when we go there and reach out, we're gonna see the teachers, the classrooms and.
Yeah.
Get a perspective from them.
Aren't you gonna take us through the tunnels?
Hopefully, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. That'd be great. I'll be all right with that.
We'll have to have the maintenance go through a clean amount first.
Getting me outside now.
So that's it?
That's it.
Perfect. Okay, policy updates. All right.
David. Um, I do wanna touch on a couple of facilities things also. Um. The softball facility, the contract work is nearly completed. It's all scheduled and paid for, but it's almost there. Um, they're doing some work to put the turf in. Um. Some, you know, minor touch-ups, but it, it's pretty much there.
It looks good.
And the scoreboard, I, if it hasn't gone up yet, will be going up relatively soon.
That is pretty impressive, Dylan.
It is. Yeah, no, it's in, I tried to include, I, I hope you guys are all enjoying the board posts. I've tried to include photos where I can. Of different things, uh, and you'll always have those to go and look back if you're out in a conversation with a community member. It's a good place to like. What was that thing that we were talking about?
Yeah.
Uh, it's a good place for resources. Uh, one other thing, you may have noticed that this room's in a bit of disarray. Uh, we are working on renovating this space to be used as the boardroom and a PD space. Uh, it'll be a multipurpose room. Um, but eventually your table will be over here facing where the coffee machine is. The screen will be up where the coffee machine is. Um, and there'll also be a second screen either behind you or on this wall. So that the audience that will sit out here will be able to look directly at the screen and they'll go mirror each other. Uh. So that's kind of the goal. We'll also be painting these bookcases about the same color as the podium or, or something similar. All of it's gonna be a neutral-ish color in here. Uh, and then those signs will be mounted up there. And provide opportunities for each of the schools to, you know, put student art or awards they've won or different things like that.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and you guys have your own. Yours is the district logo. Uh, the board has several different awards they've received over the years. We'll actually have a place to display those. Uh, so that's kind of the goal for this room and it's. They're waiting for this meeting to really put the hammer down and, and start work on it. So all the work that's been done in here already.
Amazing.
These are students. Our student construction class has done everything that's been done.
Really?
Yeah. The demo, they put up the new.
They tried to last meeting we had.
So they, they are hard at work on that. Uh, so that's why it looks like it looks now, but it, we're, it's always darkest before dark.
Oh, I thought it looked great today when we came in and saw those signs.
I love the signs too. I noticed that right away.
BNT made those for.
Yeah, they're really nice.
And there's actually, we just have to wait for the paint to cure. I know this, but. For twenty days or so. I, I got a whole rundown of BNT, uh, which was awesome. But they're gonna put a logo on the front of the podium. But they're gonna put a logo on the front of the podium also.
And they're gonna paint the floors.
They're gonna paint, oh, well, they're gonna paint floors too.
Just like they did over at the East Side.
Really?
Uh, because it holds the old battleship tile down and it's worked out really well. In fact, when they had the leak over there, it didn't hurt anything. None of the tires came up, so they were very impressed with the paint, so.
Very good. Um, and then moving on to policy. So I have kept this section in here. For uh. Uh, prospective policies for review. Did anyone have a policy or? Or anything that they would like the policy committee to review?
Well, it sounds like we're gonna be talking about AP. Down under there, yeah.
Yeah, that one is on our docket. Um, and we started the discussion, part of the that was bringing it up here at the board meeting, so you're all aware of that's something that's being discussed. And then Justin has several meetings. Uh, and stakeholders to engage with about that. And then we'll come with some uh suggested language.
Diane was very concerned about BDF. Diane was very concerned about BDF.
All right, board members, standards, Honda, BB. So some of these policies, um, and I should have noted which ones are from a policy review in June. I did not get them on our July agenda. Or August, or September, or October. So they they got that, they got put on the sideline. So I realized that when looking for a policy specifically. Um, so they're on here, they have gone through policy review, uh, but that's why they're in first week. Um, so BBF just minor language change at the bottom there. Uh, we're gonna add a section. On uh who to call to report abuse or neglect. Anything highlighted in yellow is something that the policy committee elected to keep or to add. Uh, anything in gray is what OSBA changed. And if it's highlighted red or struck through, it will be removed. So uh next policy is BBFC. Uh, we did not have. A policy specific to um reporting of suspected abuse of a child for board members specifically. Uh, but you are mandatory reporter, so we thought it's best to have it. And bring it out so that everyone understands when we get a board member. So that's what that is. That's an optional policy we have elected to keep. Um, CB is superintendent. It just picked out the footnote. BBC is also an optional policy. Uh, superintendent's contract. There were just a few optional sections we chose to remove. Um, but otherwise that policy is good to go. We will be uh. Deleting policy DJC bidding requirements. Now Brian can do whatever he wants to. Um, no, we'll be adopting the new DJC uh on the next. Uh, so several. This happens several times where I will go to investigate a specific policy and find that we haven't updated it since. You know, nineteen eighty-four. So it's not always the case that that one, but we've missed some some updates along the way. And in those instances, it's often. Better to adopt whole flock, the OSBA boilerplate policy than try to revise and figure out where. Where changes were made along the way with ours. Um, that's part of what happened here with DJC. Next one is EBBA first aid. We will be deleting that one. In lieu of the new EBBA, Student Health Services. Which is on page eighty-six of the package. We'll also uh be adopting EBC. Which is emergency plan and first aid. So the things that we're we're getting rid of in EBCA. Or sorry, EBBA, um, they are still going to be enshrined in policy, just a different policy. Um, so EBC is emergency plan and first aid.
I know, so this guy's working really hard on emergency plans.
That is something we are working hard on. Um, this one is the same thing. It's EBC, EBCA. Uh, emergency procedures and disaster plans. They just broke apart this policy and it didn't have a joint policy anymore. Uh, so that's why that one's being deleted. EBCB is emergency drills and instruction. We did uh make a few changes here. Nothing too major. That is a highly recommended policy. Uh, next one is GBB-B-AR on page ninety-five. Communicable diseases in schools. This is a highly recommended AR. Um, and there's some changes uh taking out COVID nineteen language, things like that.
So have we, I don't know if you noticed, but have we noticed the number of kids that are not getting vaccines going up? I mean, they have, you have the ability as a parent to not have to do it, but I'm wondering. If we see a big rate of increase, because some schools have to the point where they're not sure that they have. Um, school-wide immunity any longer, so they're very worried about measles and mumps and some of those other things.
You mean after, after COVID nineteen? I don't know that for sure, but Lena might be able to answer that.
Cause that is, that was getting scary in a couple.
Yeah.
Larger school districts where they really felt. Cause I think if you're down below ninety percent, then all of a sudden you don't have.
Pride of unity.
That's been our saving grace for a long time.
I will, yeah, we will check with the with student records on that and get back to you all. Um, next one is IKF. We're gonna see this one a few times this year as we talk about AP seminar and things like that. Um. The reason that, so this one actually is second reading. Uh, because we did read it at our October meeting. Uh, the reason it got brought back is there was a few missed language. We. At our October meeting, we took out the alternative certificates per state law. Uh, and Adrian Sharp Eyes noticed that it mentioned. Alternative certificates several other times in the document. So we needed to go through and take those. So that's really what this is.
Okay.
Is fixing uh a few grammatical things and then removing any any mention of. Um, alternative certificates.
I'm, I'm pleased, we've already done it. But the state uh did it too. It used to be that the school's requirements were whatever the requirements were. So a kid moves in at ninth, twelfth grade. And they haven't taken a whole bunch of the requirements and there's no way they're gonna graduate that year. And they were a military family.
Yeah.
And it's just wrong. I mean, so our counselors have always said. We'll get what you had at your other school, figure out what their graduation requirements and we'll only make you match those. So. Um, the state finally said, you gotta stop this stuff. You can't have more graduation requirements than the minimum. If a kid's willing to get a filter. There's some other reasons too.
Yeah.
Um, it's really a great policy because it was disastrous for some kids.
Yeah, you can't change the rules to the game when a kid has senior year.
Sweet added three class.
That's all I have for policies. Does anyone have any questions?
I just wanna say I am really, really appreciative of the people on that.
Yeah.
Has not been, I I really appreciate the work.
Well, and if I could add, the thing about policy that's so important is that it really is something that. Regardless how long you serve on the board. It's it's if it's a good policy, it can become a legacy thing that you can help kids staff.
Yeah.
Absolutely true.
The potential of extending that and moving, or do we want to do that later? Policy committee extending the length and. Reducing frequency.
Oh, did, well, I'm not a voting member, so I can't make a motion, but. Remember, we we did have a discussion about. And we meet policy for two hours and it can kind of get broken up. Sometimes it's nice to go into a policy and say, hey, we're gonna spend four or five hours, so we're gonna dig into policy so we can stay in that rhythm. Right? And have that conversation versus having it once a month. Having it, for example, three times a year. Yeah, I mean, I feel comfortable with the monthly. And if we can, if we take longer, just schedule it longer myself. It just seems like, cause really by the time we get through the policy, by the time the end of the year comes, we're reviewing it again anyways already. Cause it's already updating that fast.
Yeah.
I'm willing to put in more hours, so if we need to. Get more done, yeah.
Yeah. Do you have a point of view on this?
Um, the only issue I'd have with going to um less frequent policy committee meetings is that the rest of the board's gonna get. Packages that are. Three times as sick as this when we come to a meeting. And it's gonna make it a lot harder to prep.
I don't wanna do that.
I will, I will second um the proposal proposed by uh Kevin. That you go to four hour meetings every month.
You know, we can just go longer.
Right now they are in hours, so we can certainly move to. See what that does. I guess, I guess my question would be, would would the preference be three to five or four to six? If we're gonna move.
Yeah, three to five. Usually on Thursdays, right?
Typically on Thursdays, yes.
Four to six, I'm sure, well, I'll be differing, but I mean, I work. Be a good email to the committee members to figure out what works best. Were you guys scheduling rather than scheduling it during a board meeting? Just asking. We we've done that before when I was the chair of the policy. I just try to be as flexible as possible, but yeah, later. I mean, I don't know if these guys really need to.
Sounds good.
Unless, I mean, I haven't been very missed, so. But I want to feel like I'm doing my part as a board member, but I do feel guilty because. It is very difficult. I do have a very uh demanding job and sometimes it's. It's hard to leave. If I can leave, I will.
So it's particularly hard to do daytime meetings for you.
I don't need everybody to cater around. I know other people, but. I get off at four o'clock, so it would be easier for me to attend the policy.
At five to seven.
Or one of this. I mean, I can go on the straight over, but I mean.
I fully understand.
Flexibility, so it's just, I don't want you guys to feel like I'm I'm not participating or or that I don't want to either, because I do.
Well, I'll send an email out. And see what we can do to. Defend everyone's schedule.
Okay. Board member highlights. Does anybody? Anybody do anything exciting this?
Kind of, I mean, I think for the. But um I I wanna only bring this up because um I know I bring up booster a lot because that's kind of, that's who calls me and that's where I show up. But I want to tell you guys the coolest thing about doing boosters is the clubs and the kiddos that you get to work with. That's the awesome part. And it kind of got me to thinking that, I mean, I know our our board meetings sometimes go long enough as it is, but. I got to meet with the Latinx club. I've been with Science National Honor Society. Um, I was with Cross Country at one point. There's just all kinds of clubs and all kinds of kiddos that you get to meet. And sometimes we don't get to see them here. I would love like. Every now and then for us to be able to see some of those kiddos and they're raising money and it's so neat to hear where they're going. And what they're doing and the experiences that they get to have. Um, because they come in and they they work those concessions and they do various things and um. I probably wouldn't have that information unless I was in there working as a booster and.
Are they primarily at the high school?
Yes.
Yeah.
Those that there are all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To give, to be at the.
Yeah.
Make money.
So, yeah, so it's either like uh the concessions below the stadium or Fox Palace or up at the thing. But anyway, just like, how about just everybody, get all kinds of kiddos. So I. I don't know if there's room for it here where we could, but I would love for some of those kids to come in and talk about some of the things that they. They've been doing and where the money goes that they're raising. It's just, it's really cool. The Latinx club, they were such a great group of kids. And um that was probably one of my favorite, like, working with those kids and they were.
Maybe when the schools are highlighted, they could. Hot, bring one of their groups.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, for me, it's fun to, even when we have our students speaker here, um, I like. Their perspective and so it's kind of neat and and it. Um.
Are you at the high school this year? Is that your?
No. That's Arnie. I'm um destination. Yeah, you're right. And even destination, I learned that they have their own leadership group there. And um so I think that would be really cool to have even them come in. I just, I think it would be nice for us to see some more students in here. Um, maybe on our, I don't know, I know this meeting is long, but.
I I agree. I love having this dude come in and talk about this thing.
Yeah, I like it a lot too, so that's just my thought.
Arnie, did you do anything special?
Um, went to a dinner with you. That was nice.
Yeah.
The uh, the. I, when you mentioned it earlier, it really is pretty rare to have um the. For our athletes. And seeing. The ones that are getting honored now where the kids were there when I was the principal. So it's kind of fun to go back and see all those people or before me. I mean, some of them. Were older than I was, but um. It is an amazing event. Um, and the number of people that show up every time is really amazing. It's great for our community, so I I appreciate it. Um, and. Like they said, that this group was. Maybe the most humble of all the people and yet they had it, they excelled in all. Who was raised by one of my older students, um, because the parents. Didn't raise their kids, they didn't wear it around a lot for their kids to be raised. And she has done exceptionally well. Now lives in Hawaii. Uh, and she got reconnected with one of her kids on the relay who lives in Hawaii as well, so they're gonna get to meet each other. It was kind of fun, that those kind of connections that come about when you bring all these people together is always amazing.
Yeah, and those kids hadn't seen each other, a couple of them for a very long time, since they graduated. Yeah.
Yeah, so that was, it was hard to imagine it, two thousand and five. Twenty years ago, but it is, so I mean, that that group of girls that won the state championship that year, it was pretty amazing. So all in all, I think that was part of the highlight. We, I did go on a tour at the high school, which was kind of enjoyable and I I liked that one. Uh, so I guess. Lots of things are happening, I just, and I'm very appreciative of it. So I'll just say that, yeah, it was, those those are the highlights of what I did this year. I think there's a couple of things.
Anybody else?
Um, I don't know, I missed the last board meeting, but uh. Um, um. I had been unsuccessful unsuccessful in finding somebody who wanted to coach robotics team for the junior highs. So I took that responsibility on this year. Uh, I managed to get a team support. The Oregon Department Outreach Program, they sponsor all the competitions. So that was a grant of just under three thousand dollars. They paid for registration. We got a nice new robot kid and stuff.
That's great.
Um, and then they sent me an eight hundred dollar check for the remainder. Of the of the graphics drills, which we're using for t-shirts and equipment and just tools. I got the, it came some nice um. Toolboxes and stuff that they can use. First meeting, where we're meeting twice a week after school, so we met our first meeting and there were, I wanna say six kids there. Um, and we met Tuesday, Wednesday, and then we went to our first competition on Saturday in Roseburg, so. Show up at the high school by six in the morning, get on the bus with the high school team, we spent all day. Uh, doing our thing and coming back. Um, and so now I think we're up to eleven kiddos and it's. The express registration is not very express at all for the, the group that we have. So uh congratulations to those parents who did that without any help or intervention.
Is it split between boys and girls in the robotics group?
Um, it's, I think we might have more girls than boys at this point. Um, it was, we did for a short while, uh, but yeah, it's, it's about fifty fifty. Uh, I have to give a, a huge shout out to the secretaries of Roosevelt Junior High, uh, at Fiducity, they've been a big help. From handing out flyers and forms and collecting commission slips and things like that. Um, now that I've got a bachelor to get me into the door, I don't have to bug him every time I come in before they have the school. But yeah, they, they've been very supportive, so. Hopefully, you know, that program continues to go well, that'll be running through at least February.
I went over and met with Lisa at um Madison, just sat down with her for about a half an hour. Talked about how things were going and. How she felt the school year was going and about her transition and. She, she's a little less nervous today than she was when I talked to her, but she's still, you can tell, has that new nervousness. And then I went over um during school lunch week and had lunch with the kindergarteners and the first graders and the second graders. And that is quite an experience, oh, it is so much.
Which school?
At, at Madison. And you go in and I just waited till one of the groups would sit down and I'd go over and sit at a table. And pretty soon, you know, everyone is there because there's some new person here. You ask a question over here, this person's trying to answer you and it's pulling on you and then, you know, I wanna answer you, I wanna answer you. One, one of the kids said, well, why are you here, who are you, what do you do? And you just, you know, it's like, and I looked at him and I said, I'm the boss. And he goes, really? And I said, yes, and he goes, are you the boss of my teacher? And I said, yes, are you the boss of the principal? Yes. Whoa, I'm gonna tell my mother if I have lunch with the boss. That was the best one.
I love going into elementary schools, if you ever wanna have a, just a, who, go during picture day. What, and I said, you're the boss of all the schools, and I said, yeah, just here, you mean the whole world? No.
You can see where the, the delineation goes, it's my school, the world. Okay.
I was, I was able to, um, before my body gave up on me, I was able to go and volunteer, we've gotten that email from. I think it went to everyone to ask if people could volunteer for a movie night at Inside, so my family and I went there and volunteered and. Bought um for that movie night and that was a lot of fun seeing the little kiddos running around and serving so many hot dogs. I think that might have been the beginning of the.
Tended to go, go to something like that.
I don't know, it seemed like a lot, I mean, it was in a gymnasium, so it was. I don't know, probably eight hundred. You know, with the parents and families and everybody, so.
Was it a good movie?
Yeah, it's Inside Out Two, I've never, I've never seen that one before, because it's not that great because you've got.
Right, need a good sound system for that.
Everybody's running around, all the kindergartners, everybody's running around playing tag and you got some of the kiddos trying to watch the movie. And then the hot dogs.
Yeah, the, the Blossom Galls PTA used to put on regular movie nights and they were always well attended.
Yeah, really nice, it was a lot of fun and a lot of hot dogs.
Yeah, so I did the, the lunch over at the junior high and I like to ask the kids questions and see their answers and whatnot and. And uh, they kind of know where I sit on different things, but one of the kids, I think, you know, how do you eat, what do you eat, bring food and what tastes really good and, you know, what don't taste good and. The funniest one out of the little girl told me, she said that the food in Wisconsin was way worse. So, so I'm gonna, I'm like, oh, I gotta Google Wisconsin. What is going on over there? Yeah, I don't know what's going on in Wisconsin, and she said, uh, it's, it's really rough over there. But she's glad to be here. And then, uh, so then like this last weekend, through the Coos County U Sports, we had. Uh, a season of fourth, fifth and sixth grade and a season tournament at Marshfield, and that's like their one time of the year they use the turf. So it really shines, we get to turn the lights on. And uh, there was, so we had twenty-eight games on Saturday and Sunday. Yeah, and uh, it went great, it's, and you could see the community people sitting there and interacting and looking and, and then to top it off, the kids. Kind of get an idea of what it's gonna be like for high school, and they can see, especially even when we turn the lights on, maybe like a half hour, unfortunately dark. And they just start blowing, the kids got all excited, so the sports are just gonna keep growing and growing. And then Marshfield scores out of it too, because at the end, we clean, deep clean everything. So we start up the bleachers, blow everything down, sweep it all up. And uh, get it ready and then haul all the trash up, because what I've learned over the years is, if we bag it and put it by the dumpster, it stays here. No, no, the janitor will show up at like four o'clock in the morning and haul it off. And so we're on it now, so like the last time we got done, it was like twelve o'clock at night, we hauled it on the trailer, brought it to the dump the next morning, but. We beat them to it, so he probably showed up wondering what's going on, because it's all, it's all completely clean, but. Yeah, I just say thank you for everyone letting this happen, because without it being turf, having, you know, twenty-eight games in one weekend. It would look like a cow field somewhere.
And the kids are, you know, it is exciting. That's when you've been looking for you.
And there's a first, second, third place trophy, so they're. And at Coos Bay Team One is America's Mantris.
I figure I got twenty-eight games and.
No, so the, the day one, Saturday, we go sideways on the field, so it turns turf into two fields, and then the second day. It's broken down full field, so it's fourth through sixth grade playing full field. Yeah, lots of passes and good communication.
Creative and using all the space. On the track and field there. How many games can go on here, it's crazy.
Yeah, yeah, there's, it leaves three hundred and eighty games. A year.
It's amazing, you guys did great.
About, yeah, five hundred-ish kids through Coos Bay every season, so, yeah, thank you guys.
Okay, let's move along so we can get out of here. We um have an opening, we know, on the Budget Committee. We did put out an announcement asking for people to apply. We had no new applications, but the individual who applied last time, Jenna Akers. Um, resubmitted her application. And um, so tonight we are set to vo- uh, to vote on approving uh Jenna's.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Jenna Akers for the committee, Budget Committee.
Any discussion?
We did have the one vacancy at this point.
We have one vacancy. Uh, Rebecca. Went to work for the district. Um, okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, passes. We'll welcome Jenna to the. The Budget Committee. Since we're getting a little more money from the state this year apparently. We're on her. Okay, you got a packet of materials that we have to vote on for the OSBA. That include Board of Directors' positions and resolutions, there's a lot of. Did you determine, when do we have to have this vote taken by?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to submit it to them by September.
So we have to do it now.
Yeah.
Okay, so Kevin, read that real quickly, because we're voting. We were given to.
We, we, we make a vote as a board of the whole.
We make a vote as, as a board.
I'd like to make a motion to um object or continue our role.
Is there any discussion, does anybody?
I, I, in general, I mean, these were hard to read, I mean, just not knowing. It's a little hard, but I know Jackie's been our.
Jackie's been our representative for like thirty years. Yeah, exactly.
And the other individuals don't give much information either.
Okay, so um, as a group, we're going to vote for Jackie, is that? We made a motion, and I have a second, okay? Any discussion? All those in favor of Jackie as our vote for the Board of Directors, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Hey, Jackie, it is. Okay, Resolution One. Resolution One amends the OSBA dues schedule.
Two hundred and fifty dollars a year, fifteen percent.
Yeah, fifteen percent. It was about a thousand fifty hundred.
It doubles five years.
Yeah, doubled in five years.
I, I, should we have discussion first? I, I was also surprised that our dues are such a small portion of the revenue, like I, I didn't realize that. Where's the other revenue from?
Well, we pay on top of it, don't we?
For some of that stuff, but OSBA um, used to be the provider of our insurance. And some other stuff, they, they had a lot of other activities and those made a lot of money. And eventually, OEA and a bunch of others said, I don't think that's the right way that they should have that monopoly, so it went away, so. Um, they don't get the resources they have, but they were wise enough to invest a lot of it, so they got about five or six, maybe seven million dollars. In a fund that they take and use the interest, and they get more money off the interest of their investments than they get off us.
But now it's very tight, the budget and.
Yeah, now they're using up that money faster than it's.
Yeah, so they've, they've been eating into their reserve funds for the last couple of years. And they'd like to stop doing that.
I'll move that we accept number one, because I, I, I do think that. They have a reason, now, there is a big movement from a lot of schools to get out of this organization. Especially small schools, they don't think they're represented, I asked them, I said, well, look at the board, they're all from small schools, the whole board, if you look at it, are small school people. But they said, well, they're the wrong kids. Well, that's great, why don't you run, uh, anyway, but I, I do think they need to. We need a resource on that level. So I'm, I, I'm.
Yeah, I have too, I second that.
So I'll move that we vote for Resolution Number One.
Can we have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? I just wanna say I think that's a big raise over five years.
Well, it is, but it's.
I, I just, I just think of the programs that we say we can't do because we don't have any money.
So how much is the total when we get there?
Yeah, it's only gonna be twelve thousand dollars.
I'm just saying.
When we top out, you're right.
I, I'm just saying. They haven't had an increase. Eighties or nineties. So, I mean, there comes a point when you have to either pay or you're out, so.
They haven't raised the dues. And we think about po- the policies that they, I mean, just that alone, the legal assistance, how much we've reached out to them and asked.
But we pay for those on top of our dues.
Not for the policy stuff.
Oh, not for the, I thought we paid on top of.
Yeah, we have our own lawyer. When I, when I was chair and I could call and just ask, I mean, yes, they will have other attorneys and you can go into, enter into contracts. But that is, before you get to that point, it's all free. Called up and asked tons of questions about, let's go, I mean, Haley herself was like on the phone with me all the time. We didn't have any extra charges for that, that's a service they provide, or even the trainings that we've had.
I think if, if we were to hire our legal counsel to do for policy, you'd get through three policies before you made your money. And we're getting thousands of these things, you know, it's. To me, in, in my role, it's, I could not do my job without. Um, and it'd be hard pressed to find someone that could do the policy for twelve thousand, you know, outside of this.
Uh, Gary has his handbrakes, Gary?
Sorry, I hit the wrong button.
And I said too, though, that, that, that uh. You know, this works better if all the districts sort of contribute, right, if people drop out. The jeopardy in terms of how it operates. But they also provided the insurance for most of the districts, so most of them are not gonna drop out, because to go out and get your insurance individually. It's gonna be a lot more expensive than the OSBA insurance.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to adopt the dues, the amended dues schedule. Um, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, number two.
We asked again, though, because we just passed on that they will grow every year.
Okay, Resolution Number Two, creates the Oregon School Board Members Pride Caucus and designates a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors. And Legislative Policy Committee.
To make a motion to approve Resolution Two, that creates the Pride Membership Caucus. As well as the LPC, as just as the other caucuses we currently have, currently, yes.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
So my, my discussion is, I appreciate this one, I appreciate the Color Caucus probably as much or more, and we have a. Member who's the secretary of that caucus on our board. Only concern I have is over time, how many people are on the board? And how, how much will getting a number of caucuses on there affect the board's makeup? Because when you start putting individual groups on that have their own agenda. It makes for a different kind of board meeting than when you're getting people elected from all over the state, so I, I, there comes a point where I'm gonna have a hard time with this one. Perspective of this one, I think, has a, a reason for being, I have, I thought the Rural Caucus had a reason for being, and so they have their seat already. And the Color Caucus has theirs, so that means that we have three, if this one gets on, three different caucuses. And I know that.
I'm surprised there's not a disability caucus.
Yeah, or Native American or whatever.
People of color would be Native American.
Right, and right now it is, that's true.
Our, our vice chair, current incoming chair is tribal and very, very active in the tribal nation.
And if I remember correctly, Arnie, um, during that, um, during our regional discussion at the ESD last week. It was mentioned that they were looking into the whole, you know, like, how, how many caucuses is too many type of question. And, and trying to limit those to, uh, you know, OSBA's ultimate mission is to support students and student learning, and so. So those basic caucuses are the ones where there's the biggest differential between your average students and, you know, students of those groups. And so that's what they've been focusing on, and, and I think they are looking at, you know, what is that limit? Before you, you start shifting the. Kind of that balance of the Board of Directors towards the caucuses versus the, the members.
How many people are seated right now on the board, David? Justin, I keep calling you Jesse, Justin, I mean, it's, what is it, eleven?
How many are on OSBA's board?
Yeah, twenty, I can't remember, it was quite, it's quite a bit.
Oh, it's a big board.
It's a big, it's a huge board.
So this would add another board member to their board?
Yeah.
They're a huge board, so I guess the impact is.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, that's what I was gonna say.
And two of those are, and two of those are groups.
Yeah, two of them, so it was twenty-one before that.
Well, their board's too big to hold.
It's not gonna sway what my opinion is, is right now adding the Pride Caucus.
It's not gonna.
It's not gonna.
It's not gonna be off kilter, but I understand what you're saying.
The hope, the hope is that these people will bring a different perspective, so they can have a bigger discussion at the board.
Right.
Um, because they have been underserved, or they have not done it as a group of people, they have not done as well as the rest of the population. And until we get equi- equity across the board, they probably need some different kind of representation. For that, I agree. Uh, you could tell there was a lot of dissent in the hour room at the ESD. Um, so there was a number of concerns about why isn't there a white person's caucus, and this is my concern.
Yeah, there were, yes. There was, there was some pushback about why, why did they get something special?
Well, I'll represent those people and say no to it. So we can move right on, I'll help represent them.
Okay. Okay, so we've, um, is there further discussion?
That topic.
Okay, all those in favor of creating the Pride Caucus and designating a seat on the OSBA Board of Directors and Legislative Policy Committee, say aye.
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 Opposed? Kevin, care votes yes, the motion passes. Okay, Resolution Number Three, adopts the proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws. This also caused a lot of discussion because they had already included the name of the caucus.
Yeah.
In the update. In perens and.
So they clearly understand that if it does pass and there is no Pride Caucus, all the perens go away.
Yeah, everything that is deleted.
So once that was clear, did they understand that?
Yeah, they finally did, but.
It took a while?
Yeah, it took quite a while.
It took quite a while.
They're still upset over the whole caucus.
They, they were, it's the caucus.
The interesting thing is that these, every school board, and I think every ESD board gets to vote on these, is my understanding.
Yeah.
Hundred and ninety-seven school districts. Eighteen, I don't know, something like that, ESD, they kind of vote on ESDs, so that's a lot of groups voting on it. The vast majority are small school districts. Uh, they get kind of equal votes, I don't think it's by population, you get a vote, so it'll be interesting to see how this one comes out.
And did you see I get a vote and a half if I'm a veteran?
No, that, that's Mr. Vance's proposal vote. And he hasn't been elected yet.
Is that really one on there?
And hopefully won't be.
Thankful.
Good night to myself. Okay, let's move along. Fun, guys, it's already eight thirty.
Take a motion to adopt the proposed amendment.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to adopt the proposed amendments to the OSBA bylaws, we have a second by Adrian. To further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes.
One, one nay.
One nay?
Yeah.
One nay?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Representing its constituents.
Yep. Okay, I think that's it, like the name of our district.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. OSBA, we leave.
Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody that joined us online.
You've reported to submit.
Yeah, I'm filling it out.
And you don't submit it?
Yeah.